Please call this meeting in order, please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, this is the Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, April 17th, 2018. We'll go right into the consent agenda. This is for approval of minutes for April 3rd, 2018, approval of payroll, April 6th, 2018, approval of claims, April 5th and April 12th, 2018. And this is also for Memorial Opera House. This is Rock the Block, this is the Artist Engagement Contract, all under the consent agenda. I'll open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, motion carries. We will now move into announcements and I will turn the microphone over to Commissioner Biggs. We have announcement on the 911 dispatch update.
Thank you Commissioner, good. There has been much discussion in the last week whether the 911 center should switch over to a one-channel or a two-channel dispatching system for police and fire departments. Unfortunately, there has been incorrect and incomplete information circulating on some social media sites. Ultimately, the final decision rests with the County Board of Commissioners. And we want to make it clear that we have not reached a decision about which approach will be implemented. This change, whether it is one-channel or two-channel, is not an isolated decision. Whatever we choose, there is a domino effect. There will be personnel and training impacts for both our dispatchers and first responders. We have to consider any potential programming, software and hardware needs, which may differ based on the choice we make. If there are such needs, we must work with the consul, the county consul, to determine whether the funding is going to, where it's going to come from, or whether or not it's even available. We need to examine if and how the decision will impact the upcoming move of the 911 center to the 157 Franklin Street building. We cannot go into this rushed. It is a critical condition that has so many moving parts. It will be several weeks before we can complete our review of the options and their impacts. During this time, we will continue to listen to thoughtful and reasoned input from our police and fire departments. And above all else, we will make the safety of our citizens and the first responders our top priority. That's it. Thank you Jim.
You're welcome. Any other comments from any other commissioners, Laura or anybody else? Okay. Thank you Jim. We'll move into new business, we'll move right into the Commissioners' part of the agenda. First of all, what we have in front of us is approval of a release of an RFP for liquor license/lease at 157 Franklin within the city of Alperazo. And what this basically is, as everybody knows, the county is under contract to purchase the building at 157 Franklin. And we are in the process of moving towards executing that contract and we're starting to work on the development of the plan, on what offices and people will be going into that building. As it also stated in paper, but we'll formalize it here, I guess, is that the people that own the building that we're buying own the restaurant inside, which is, I think, Casa Del Mar. They have decided to not keep the restaurant. This was their decision, it was not ours. We actually advocated that they stay, but they really, they're in other businesses and respectfully, they declined. They will be staying on, I believe, 90 days past the execution of the contract. So, once we close, they will be a tenant of ours for 90 days. What this will do is we are going out to the market to look for another restaurant and liquor license that the city of Alpo has, to find another tenant to come in and be there in that building, because we feel that the space is right for that type of use as part of the building. So, just want to explain that to everybody as to what's going on. And Scott, if there's anything else that you want to add to?
The reason why we're doing it with Alpo is because of the, with the city of Alperazo is the interplay of the liquor license that ultimately, the city of Alperazo and their boards would have to approve. So, that's why we're doing this together. They've done this in the past, when they've had another one of those historic liquor licenses available. So, they've done this before and they're learning from what they did the first time and we're going to do it a second time. And so therefore, if a restaurant is chosen from the process, it's a dual-edged sword as far as dealing with the lease from us and then also the approval process with the city of Alperazo for the liquor license. So, that's why this is a good fit to not have parallel tracks, but to do it in one request for proposals from the restaurant community.
Yeah, and just, you know, city of Alpo has been very gracious in doing this for us and working with us. The city of Alpo seems to get all the phone calls when liquor licenses are available, they're the ones that get the calls, and they're the ones that are talking to all the people that are interested in this. So, from our perspective, it makes a lot of sense to get the right people in the right place to talk to each other. So, that's what we're trying to do here. So, any other questions or anything from the board about this?
Just a coincidence, it ends up being a good Blaney Biggs hot dogs and fries. Just a coincidence.
I'd rather have steaks if I'm involved.
Steak sandwiches, steak sandwiches.
All right, I'll open up the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve and release the RFP for liquor license/lease at 157 Franklin with the city of Alperazo. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Next on the Commissioners' agenda is we want to announce the release of the RFP for the Porter County Wellness Clinic. And Scott, can you give us a little update there too?
We've been working with our consultant, Tony Bontrager with Ari Sutton, and as we've moved our way through our insurance transition, that for the most part, given the size of our group, has been very smooth. Your normal bumps and bruises as you do anything of that size and magnitude. Now, we're ready to, starting to put that, to some extent, in the rearview mirror. And as we're moving forward, as we talked about before, we're going to be looking at the option of having Employee Wellness Clinic, as we discussed when we originally did this switchover that we did effective April 1st. That will, this is basically the announcement that that will be released, basically in the next seven days. I know we have garnered a lot of phone calls from all the different medical providers in the area. So, I think this is a good, effective way to let everybody show what they have to offer. This is kind of an evolving field and evolving area. So, this allow everyone a chance to come and respond to the request for proposals. So, again, this would be for the Employee Wellness Clinic component. It's kind of the final component of the plan for the employee health insurance. So, that will be released in about seven days in my conversations with Mr. Bontrager.
And so, for our employees who are listening, a lot of this, what we're going to be looking at is times that they're open. Obviously, there's a financial component to it, location. So, there's a lot of things here that we need to look at for this, but I can honestly say again, up here, as we've worked through the health insurance issues here in the county, we're at a very good spot right now, because we have a lot of interest in this clinic. I mean, I think we've been contacted by five different players wanting to come in and do that. And when I hear that, it reminds me of the Walmart commercial about falling prices. So, we like that. But on the other hand, it's not just about the cost, we're also looking at convenience and we're looking at other things for our employees. So, we feel this is a great opportunity for a win-win on all levels, for the county and the employees. So, this is the final piece to our health insurance program moving forward and we're very excited about it. With that, I'll make the motion to release the RFP for the Wellness Clinic. Second. We have a motion and a second to release the RFP for Porter County Employee Wellness Clinic. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, motion carries. We're off to the races.
And just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, we're actually looking at this location as a clinic location. They have it located right in the building for the employees. So, it's made, its best use is made here, so.
Yep.
And we can control the rent, right?
Yes. We get another tenant that will pay rent. So, I sort of like that, go toward the utility bill. Right? It's a big utility bill. Anyway, good. So, next on the agenda is a proposal for Dooley Group by the Chesterton to do a topographical survey for the Porter County Courthouse. As most of you know, the capital improvement plan is well in its swing. We're now starting to look at some of the site planning around, in and around the courthouse. We're also assessing the inside of the courthouse. We just got a study back on the shell of the courthouse, on the limestone and some of the foundation issues that we're having. We're going to be, I think at the next meeting, we'll be entering that report into the public records, so we have a document of it that people can look at from now until eternity. We wish some of the, what had been done 15, 20 years ago, that we could have sort of picked up some of this stuff in red, but nobody did that. But we're going to leave our people that follow behind us, we're going to leave them a good trail that they can figure out what we did 20 years from now. But this is a topographical survey in and around the whole courtyard area. It's needed to do site planning and other things. I believe it was for six?
Six thousand.
Six thousand dollars. And that's what's on the table right now, so they can get going and get the topographical survey completed.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Dooley Group, topographical survey for the Porter County Courthouse. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, motion carries. And then we have on number four, here on the Commissioners, we have notice to bidders for renovation of the Alperazo courthouse. And is this for the bid package of the windows?
Yeah, this is bid package number one. This is the formal notice that will be put in the paper, announcing it, we'll be accepting bids up until May 8th, 2018 at 10:00 a.m. There will be also a pre-bid conference on April 23rd at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' side chambers for any questions that the potential bidders would have. This is our first, this is our notice to go out that that, those bid packages will be coming out shortly.
And this bid, yeah, it's for all the windows. And so, we're, part of the plan, we'll be not only doing all the limestone work and cleaning and tuck pointing and replacing on the outside of the building, we'll also be doing new windows too, for the entire building. This releases the windows, the bid package for the windows. I think the windows are going to take probably eight to 14 weeks delivery, so we want to get out in front of it and get it going, so we can still put these windows in before winter hits. So, that's the plan there. Do we need to approve this notice?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll open up the floor to the Commissioners.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to notice to bidders for the renovation of the Alperazo courthouse and to release that. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Now, we're going to move into Garett Construction. This is payment application for number six, for the Admin Plaza renovation, the amount of forty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars, fifty-five dot cents. The remaining balance is sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty and ninety, seventy, sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty and ninety cents. I'll open to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Garett Construction, payment application number six, for the Admin Plaza renovation. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have GIS. Please come forward, Charlie Keen. This is property casualty renewal. Get ready for some more good news. I like good news. Morning, gentlemen.
Good morning. Mark Parent, this is Charlie Keen. Here to just give a summary of the marketing we've done for the insurance. Just to start out with, we do appreciate the county of Porter selecting us to be a property casualty broker. We look forward to continue working with you, implementing your risk management strategy and provide some service and support to help support that plan. Insurance program marketing for April 10th. All the coverages except workers' compensation were effective January 1st. The workers' compensation renewed in April. We took that opportunity to market the property casualty coverages excluding workers' comp to the market. We went out to 12 insurance companies that specialize in public sector programs in Indiana. Out of the 12 carriers, five insurance carriers provided proposals. One of the five is a partially self-funded workers' compensation program, and the other four proposals were guaranteed cost programs. Through the extensive examination of all the program options we received, with the exception of workers' comp, cyber liability and the accident health policies, General Insurance recommends the county of Porter moved coverages to Travelers Insurance for the April effective date. Travelers has a dedicated public sector division and currently works with 18 counties in the state of Indiana. In addition to significant cost savings, Travelers is providing enhanced coverages and services compared to the current program.
I'm Charlie Keen with General Insurance. With regards to the workers' compensation coverage, General Insurance is recommending that the county enter into a partially self-funded workers' compensation program offered through Caitlin Morgan Insurance Services. The program allows the county to pay claims with funds that would traditionally be applied to premiums in the normal marketplace. With proper safety training procedures and an overall mindset committed to minimizing losses to the county, the county can control these claims and maximize the growth of the loss fund over years. Caitlin Morgan will offer the county unmatched risk management, safety and loss prevention services to help ensure the long-term viability of the workers' compensation self-funded With regards to the overall premium, the expiring premium, one million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. Renewal premium effective March, excuse me, April 10th, 2018, one million, four hundred and thirty thousand, thirty thousand, seven hundred and two dollars. So, nice savings there. We do recommend that the county contributes four hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars into the workers' compensation loss fund.
And that was included in those numbers?
Correct. That was, that number was included in the total premium. So, that's somewhat confusing, because it's hard to compare, we're really comparing apples and oranges. So, good point, thank you. So, in conclusion, we're very proud of the results that we've been able to bring to the county. The county of Porter will recognize a total insurance savings, fixed costs of over two hundred and eighty thousand for 2018. We are committed to continue to help the county identify, develop, implement and monitor the county's risk management strategy. And we appreciate your trust you place in General Insurance Services.
Thank you, Charlie. Any questions, Jim?
It's remarkable when you go out and bid things out, what can happen.
Indeed.
Thank you, guys did, you guys have done a wonderful job over the last few months.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I, I mean, we turned around and bound at the first year and then, once we bound for this year, we turned around immediately and moved towards rebidding it again, so we could move, we could move our renewal date from April 1st to April 1st. And that helps us in a lot of ways. That's when our renewals come forward on the health insurance. So, now, we're going to be able to deal with all of our insurance in one time in the year. And it also sets us up for better budgeting as we go forward for next year, because now we're getting more real-time numbers for our budgeting as we move into next year. So, before, we had almost a year lag in our premium and insurance numbers, so.
Let me guess, you said April 1st to April 1st?
Well, yeah.
It was January.
It was January 1st, was our first renewal. And that property and casualty was always renewed January 1st. For us, it was always tough, because we're getting bids in at the end of the year, and that's when we're doing a lot of other things at the end of the year. And so, what we're doing is we're just sort of shifting our workloads around a little bit, but it also puts us in a better time for, it's just a better timeframe for us for a lot of different reasons, from a management protocol perspective.
And we don't have people turning over if there's an election, right?
Right. Right. And that was the other thing, is you have elections and you have new people coming in and the premiums are due. So, we're trying to make this work for a lot of different reasons for everybody, so. But it was a lot of work, is what I'm trying to say. And these gentlemen came in and, at a fixed fee, did a lot of work for that fixed fee. But I think with that, all that work though, I think we took a very, very deep dive and learned a lot about what was going on out there. And we've corrected a lot of things, we've done a lot of things to put us in. And I know, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year is a good savings, but I think on top of that, we have much better coverage than we had the last time too. And you can't put a dollar figure on that. So, that, I think, I think a lot of areas where the coverage increases is in very critical areas too, so.
Yeah, I think the numbers are actually larger than what you quoted. I mean, quite honestly, when you, and I'm not asking you to agree, but when you come in and audit it, this property and casualty program was an absolute mess. I think we'd all agree to that. And so, you know, but I, speaking for myself, because I, you know, Lauren Jeff had brought up the elections, you know, there's constantly revolving door of elected officials up here who come in with their own agendas and their own, you know, what they see as policy and what. But I hope that we're doing here is establishing a strong policy for others to follow and also a culture, a business culture that they'll follow. So, again, thank you, you guys have done a great job.
Well, in the detail, in what Jim said, take one step back, I mean, what really happened was we started with a consultant with KBIC who came in and educated all of us greatly and went out and did a significant process to get to GIS. And then, once GIS was chosen, then that baton of work kind of passed to them and then they dove into the actual insurance coverage itself. So, this process started with the Commissioners approving KBIC's contract a year and a half or longer ago.
Yep.
And then, working through the process to go from KBIC to GIS to today. So, this feels like a great aha moment in April, but in reality, this started a year and a half ago and it's been a lot of work to get to here. But ultimately, as Jim has pointed out, the end result is, I think, a much better understanding of what is happening up here with our coverage and some ways to save some money on it. So, I would thank you also.
Thank you. Better service and lower prices, and that's what we're trying to do up here. Keep ratcheting it up to service levels for all of our people too. So, job well done. Do we need to approve the renewal? So, we need to approve the renewal for the next year. And I'll open up the floor to the Commissioners unless there's any other comments.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the property casualty insurance renewal with GIS Insurance for 2018. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Look forward to seeing you at all of our upcoming meetings.
Sounds good.
You bet. You can leave those ties at home too, if you want.
I gotta put one on every now and then.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have a memorandum of understanding between the Porter County Commissioners and the Portage Township Trustee, and we'll let Scott sort of talk about what that MOU is.
So, this MOU is dealing with the capital project up in Porter County North, at the Portage Court, North County Annex. This is dealing with the cost share between the Township Trustee and the food bank and the county. This is dealing with basically who's paying for what, and it's very detailed. But basically, we have some shared costs, we have some direct costs. What we've attempted to do with this MOU is put together a circumstance in which the things that are most cost savings for the county to take on as the original contract and then do a share with the trustee has been shared, has been set up that way. The way that cost share is basically working is the simple math of the square footage that the Township Trustee and the food bank will take. And then, we've also, because we have Skilman on board, we were able to figure out that when it comes to the actual construction costs, that we could do some direct contracts or they can do some direct contracts for the construction itself. And our bid packets will still look like a bid package for the outbuilding, thirteen, fourteen thousand square foot building, but when the contracts are actually done, the trustee will enter into those directly. But for instance, the construction management contract is an overarching contract and we'll be sharing that with them, again, based on the ratio of the square footage that we're all dealing with. So, I think it's very fair. The trustee's office and their council had an opportunity to review it. We've had some few revisions, so this is ready to be approved. And then, that way, we can formalize what we've been talking about with them from the beginning, as far as being able to put together a situation where we're bidding things to get the best price possible, but we're sharing, either we're sharing the cost or we're doing direct contracts down the road. So, this is underway and I would recommend that we, that the Commissioners approve this.
Some of the other things that are in there too, not only just from a construction standpoint, but from an operational standpoint ongoing, I think Portage Township is going to be assisting with the snow plowing out there, which we don't have assets up there, so they're using their assets. We're going to mow. There's a community room up there, it's going to be a new early voting place and a community room for North County. Portage Township is going to program that community room for us, because they have their offices right there. So, what we're doing is we're sort of trading off, because of location, who's going to do what, and then we're formalizing it going forward. So, then 10 years from now, when everybody's scratching their head, they can just pick up a piece of paper and that's, that's how it's supposed to go. So, but the MOU is not just about the construction of the building, it's about the ongoing responsibilities going forward. So, I'm very pleased to hear that they came back and looked and approved it, so. With that, I'll open the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for an MOU between Porter County Commissioners and the Portage Township Trustee. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Next up, Clerk Karen Martin. I don't think Karen is here. This is?
This is a contract between the county clerk and the caring place to provide advocates to those that are attempting to fill out the protective order forms for courts. This is a contract between the county clerk and the caring place. The caring place advocate would be paid forty dollars, or the caring place itself would be paid forty dollars per protective order that they are working on. This has been, because it's not into the budget, as we stood, the council president has signed off on it, knowing that it's here and that we can approve it.
Oh, yes, okay.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second for an agreement between the clerk and the caring place for protective order advocate services agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Animal Shelter Tony Bianchi, Director, come forward. Good morning, Tony. How you doing?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Good.
And what we have here is Verizon, this is a mobile broadband to provide internet access for the animal control officer's vehicles.
Yes. Currently, they're using the jet packs from the sheriff's department, and the sheriff's department would like them back.
Oh.
They've been kind enough to let us use them for the past year almost, so we just wanted to go ahead and get our own, and that will come through my budget, my telephone budget, so it's pretty much all covered. Worked with Don Wilson on this to get the right jet packs and everything for their computers, so. Should be a done deal.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for mobile broadband. We have a motion and a second for mobile broadband to provide internet access for the animal control officer vehicles. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post the same sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Expo Center Lori Daly. She's got three quotes for fence repair.
Kind of.
Oh, you got two.
I did. Unfortunately, they came out and did a quote, but never sent it to me. And speaking with them twice, they didn't know why.
That they didn't want to turn it in or?
Apparently not.
But we tried.
We tried.
That's the important part.
I tried.
Where's this fence for?
Right along 49. A semi was going south and decided to do a U-turn and took out the fence.
So are they paying for the new one? The insurance?
GIS is on it. They may not know it, but.
Okay. Perfect.
Yeah.
How it's supposed to work.
Yeah.
We have three quotes. One is for Wonder Fence for $975.25 and one's from Northern Indiana Fence for $1,350. Where's Wonder at?
They're in Lake Station. They had done work a couple of years ago when the gate got taken out by a semi.
Again, seeing a repeat here.
So nothing's a lot.
Got a lot of fence out there.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the quote from Wonder at $975.25.
Second. We have a motion, we have a motion and a second for a fence repair out at the Expo Center for Wonder Fence Company at $975.25. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Go fence it. Auditor Vicki Urbannick. She was around here somewhere. Hi, Vicki. New status change procedures.
Commissioners, as part of the ongoing enhancement we have been trying to make to payroll in over the last few years, we have been working in the auditor's office on a new status change form. Status change forms are submitted to the auditor's office by department heads whenever there's a change in a status, hence the name, for an employee, whether it's a demotion, promotion, salary change, new hire, rehire, resignation or termination. Now, as we're, we looked at other counties' status change forms. We consulted with HR to look at some other models of status change forms. And we came up with a new form that we think will correct some deficiencies in the old form that we've been using. The reason why I'm here before you is to give you a peek at some of the new policies that we would like to propose as part of the unveiling of a new status change form. It's especially important now that we have our new timekeeping system because we have changed the pay date, so it's one week after the pay period. That has led to a lot of improvements in our payroll system. We have a timekeeping system, which has definitely enhanced accountability because now we have a tracking of the hours that employees are working. But we still have the need for departments to submit changes on their employees to the auditor's office on a timely basis. The current policy just calls for department heads to submit changes promptly. That's pretty vague. It doesn't give a concise and enforceable deadline. So what we would like to do is to release memos to the department heads and reiterating the need for them to get us the status changes as soon as the status change is determined. What that will do for us is to get the new employee set up and write stuff. We can't get people set up if we don't know who's coming on board. We would like terminations, resignations, anytime an employee leaves to be told to us almost immediately, within one business day. We need to alert perf. We need to get them off of the insurance example. What I'm trying to do is to minimize the, sometimes the chaos that comes up during payroll week because our payroll week has now been shortened. And so I'd like our payroll to function like a well-oiled machine and on the non-payroll weeks, deal with the changes that we need to put in. And so the proposal is what I think are some common sense proposals that basically call for a deadline of status changes as soon as possible, but no later than the Thursday before the pay period. All new hires are to begin with the start of a pay period because it does cause some problems to start them in the middle of a pay period. It's doable, but if we can encourage the start of the pay period. We also would like the new employee paperwork to be filled out, also for rehires, because we've had some people who have come back to work. We have their social security number, but has anything changed since they came back? Has their bank deposit changed? Has their withholding changed? And a lot of people are changing their withholding because of the new.
Their last name.
Well, you can change your withholding with our office, but today's the last day to file your tax return. And next year, filing tax returns will have some significant differences over this year's tax returns. And we are just, once again, reiterating that everyone needs to follow your timekeeping policy. So if you want to review this and confirm it or make some changes by your next meeting, we are ready to roll out our new status change with the next pay period.
Well, I guess I'll jump in and say this. Vicki's being nice and I'm going to be a little bit more harsh. People, departments across the board just do not understand how important it is to get employee information to the auditor's office as quickly as possible. We have way too many incidences of people have been working five, six, seven days and their paperwork is still not to the auditor's office. And then it's a crisis on the last payroll day because they should be getting paid and their information is not here. And that's why, one of the reasons why Vicki was encouraged to do this policy and get it on the commissioners' agenda, to get it approved, because we can't have people working without I-9s. We can't have people working without the proper documentation. We have all kinds of regulations and things to deal with and timelines. And hiring people and having them work and not having their paperwork get to the auditor's office does nothing but cause chaos. So and then with mistakes are made and fingers are pointed and it just really is a bad situation. So I encourage the commissioners to look at these policies because they need to be enforced. Department heads need to be educated and we need to follow them so that when we get to the point, and we're gonna get to the point if it doesn't change, that somebody doesn't get paid, we need to be able to figure out how we got there. The answer is gonna be something, the paperwork that needs to be done for a new employee just never got to where it needed to go. And right now, I know that Vicki and her office have been spending a tremendous amount of time on that last payroll day, running around this entire county, gathering the paperwork because they don't want somebody not to get paid, which is very admirable and I appreciate that. However, it's not their job to babysit every department in the county to make sure their employees get paid. It's a simple amount of paperwork that needs to be done and needs to be done as quickly as possible.
I read through it. The policy looks good. My only concern is the enforcement of it. How is it enforced? I mean, if it's not enforced, passing this will only create more work on your end. You realize that.
Yes. Well, if status changes are not turned in and we cannot set people up and write stuff for timekeeping, they will not be able to clock in and out. They will not be able to have a timesheet. If the new employee paperwork is not submitted to us, we are not allowed to pay anybody without a social security number, without the withholding. We can't guess what people want on their withholding.
Maybe we could just start hiring all the people then, us at the commissioners, and then let all the other department heads and elected officials, and they can hire them, right? I mean, because that's, in our business with our HR, we have 28 properties in eight different states. And if that general manager screws up payroll, it's his, he's the one that has to deal with that employee. And it becomes real, real quick.
Yes.
And then the problem goes away. I mean, it has. It goes away. So.
And that's why we would like to tighten up on the status change. The status change form is the trigger to the auditor's office to say that something is happening.
Yep.
So we need to start plugging it into payroll and now with timekeeping. We, we need to set them up. Then the new employees work with your HR department in filling out all the forms and the I-9s. And that's the second part. We don't need that as immediately as the status changes, but at least the status change will be the first step.
Well, it's as simple as this. We have employees working that can't clock in and clock out. So we're not even following our timekeeping policy. And that's not because, and that's not at fault of the auditor. It's because they don't have enough information to put them in the timekeeping system to begin with.
Right.
So the process has to begin at the hiring of people, not desperately before the first payroll that those people should be getting paid on. So it's, it's pretty straightforward and we just, department heads as a whole, not everyone, but department heads as a whole, need to make sure the status changes are done as quickly as possible. And we need to continue to fine tune the policy. And ultimately, Jim, I think the commissioners are gonna have to enforce it. And if that's by putting the department heads on the agenda and asking them why they can't get their paperwork done for their new employees, then that's what we'll have to do.
We're always the bad guys. This should be, payroll should be, like you said, it should be a well-oiled machine.
Right.
And it's, it is everywhere else and there's no reason that it can't be here, too. And we just gotta get better at it.
And the form that you put together is very clear, very simple, straightforward.
It is.
It shouldn't be a problem for anyone to figure.
Yeah. Some other counties have three pages of forms. We wanted to keep it simple, but our current form does not address all the situations. Our current form is about quarter of a page. So it, it works better.
Good. I'll open the floor if there are no more questions.
So should the motion be to approve the form?
Yes.
In the process or?
Should this have a number or something?
Status change procedures.
7.11? Actually, I didn't.
Really?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jim.
A motion to, to pass an amendment to the current personnel policy language, specifically 7.11 actions which impact payroll. I'm not gonna read that whole thing.
And then also to improve the new proposed employee status change form.
So moved. We have a motion?
And I'll second.
And a second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post the same sign. Motion carries.
Vicki, all the department heads will get a copy of this.
Oh, yes. I usually send out memos via email and paper copies.
Okay.
Just in case one gets lost in the transition. So I will do this, definitely. And then we'll roll out the new status change form with the next pay period.
Yep. And, and thank you again for all the work that you've done on the software and the timekeeping. That has been a heavy, lot of work. And thank you, Vicki.
Yes.
You kept it on the rails.
Well, thank you. It's, I think overall, it's been working pretty well and we hope to keep making improvements in it.
Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you very much.
Next up, recycle waste reduction. Therese Howler, Director. Hi, Therese.
Just before the commissioners to ask permission to have an informational table in the lobby of the first week in May this year. And if it's not too premature, also the first week in November to educate the public, visitors and employees about composting in May and then America's Recycle Day in November.
Liked it. You did them all at once for the whole year. Thanks. I'll open up the floor.
That won't interfere with voting or anything?
Monday through Friday.
Good point, Laura.
Yeah, that will be.
In November.
We did, I believe there was a request and it was granted last year for that same time period. I'm not sure that it coincided with voting. There was a table here in the little antique area there where the doors are.
I mean, it might be. Good thing more people.
Well, I don't think that if we had the overlap, we didn't do the voting out there. We did the voting down in the classroom, so.
Right. And only half a day.
Right.
I don't, I don't see it.
A motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion. Second and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Got it down. Thanks, Therese. Next up, Matt Steckley. Looks like we got some more roofing projects. I think I've done this many roofs. Good morning, Matt.
Good morning.
So why don't you give us a brief description of each one, Matt?
And the number? Number two shouldn't have been on here. It was a quote that I received, but we're, that wasn't mandatory. There was two different roofs on this facility. So number two is not needed. We'll definitely get a few more years out of that portion of the roof. Number one is for the Valparaiso Highway Garage to remove and replace the current roof, flat rubber membrane over the office part. It's been overdue in this, this winter with the thaw and the deep freeze that we had just was kind of the final straw.
End of life life.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. I knew it was getting there, but this winter sped it up by a year or two on me.
So you got three quotes?
Correct. Ross, Maris and Corellis, Ross Roofing, all of them received the same scope of work. Ross Roofing came in at $22,151.
And you feel pretty comfortable with them and talking to them and everything?
Sure. I've, I've never worked with Ross Direct, but yeah, they're, we did our due diligence. Yeah, they're, they're a reputable solid vendor, so.
Okay.
A motion to approve Ross Roofing, though low bidder at $22,151.
Second. We have a motion and a second to repair and replace the Valparaiso Highway Department, Highway Department's office building for roof repairs. Award to Ross Roofing in the amount of $22,151. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post the same sign. Motion carries. Get you a new roof out there, Andy. Keep you dry.
And then number three, I, this is something, if you want to divulge on kind of the scope of what we're doing here, and then I'll get into the numbers.
What we have tasked, what the Board of Commissioners have tasked Matt to do, building the facility to do, is we are looking at the space over here in the commissioners' office and the auditor's office. And we've had discussions with Vicki about this. And what we're basically doing is we're gonna be building some walls and doing some interior movement between the auditor's office and the commissioners' office. What we're gonna be doing is we'll be bringing our HR department. We'll be bringing them in behind the HR, behind the commissioners' offices. We'll also be putting in another meeting in there, which is desperately needed. We just don't seem to ever have enough meeting places in this building because there's a lot more meetings going on now. And, and then we'll be, so we'll be taking some space from Vicki's spot, but we'll also be giving back the space where HR is on the end of the building to Vicki's spot. So we're just sort of trading some spaces here, making it a little bit more functional, a little bit more workable. After 25 years, some of the work patterns and things have changed a little bit. And this is just gonna put us in a better, in a better situation for our employees and for us and for other things. So did I miss anything on that, Scott? I think, and Vicki, we did talk to you about this, right? We did work with you on this. Okay. I just, I just want to make sure.
And the way, there are several components to the scope of work on this. I mean, obviously, the Board of Commissioners and Vicki and myself, I involved DLZ just for some renderings.
Right.
So we kept the cost down in terms of running with the full scope of services, drawings and design and layout. We, we, you know, just used the tip of the iceberg with DLZ to keep the cost down. So one or two visits onsite to get some renderings. And then I ran with the scope. So the entire scope of work was put together. And then I did a pre-quote, pre-bid walkthrough with the vendors. So we met here in the evening and apple samples. Yeah, really, really happy with the quotes. They're extremely tight in terms of the variances. So really confident of it. You know, happy to see Goff, at my time here, they've tried several times and they finally got one. So we were laughing about that. So I would like to award the project to Goff for the lowest amount of $78,250.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the quote of Goff Construction, Inc. of $78,250, no, $78,250. And that's for the renovation work between the auditor's and commissioners' offices. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post the same sign. Motion carries. Thanks.
Have a great day.
Thanks, Matt. Andy McKay, Highway Superintendent. This is for awards of bituminous materials. If you were at our last meeting, we opened up all of the quotes for all of our bituminous material vendors for all of our paving and roadwork that we're gonna be doing this year. Andy took those bids under advisement, and now he's back to report to the commissioners. So Andy, take it away.
Yeah, this is for the liquid. This is also for asphalt and for crack sealing. We've bid on all of them. Each one has a cheaper price on different things. That's why we're recommending accepting all of them. All of them have their bids in order with bid checks or bid bonds. Everything was good.
I think from what, from what I looked at overall, it looks like we're pretty flat for this year, right, Andy?
Yeah, we dropped a little bit. I think last year's surface, which is our biggest product, was 63. Now this year, I think the highest one was 60, 60 even, I think.
Oh, so there was.
Just a little bit. At 1,500 ton, you know, for a mile, it adds up fast.
Yeah, it sure does. Well, that's good news.
Yes.
So I guess what the board needs to do is take those bids and formalize them. So I'll open the floor. We have, by 2 minutes, and we're basically accepting them all. So we have Central Paving, Boyd Asphalt, Town and Country Construction, Rethryd construction, and Walsh Kelly. So, and they're all within that same price range. So we've given you the opportunity to use them based on schedules and everything else, so.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the bituminous asphalt bidders, which would be Central Paving, Boyd, Town and Country, Rethryd, and Walsh Kelly. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Then on the liquid bituminous, we have the Clint Group, which is Bitmat Products and Asphalt Materials, Inc. We'll open those up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve liquid bituminous quotes for Clint Group and Asphalt Materials, Inc. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. And then the last one, bituminous crack seal and asphalt pavement solutions, Inc. And I'll make a motion to approve that. We have a motion and a second for pavement solutions for bituminous crack seal. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Now you can start ordering stuff.
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all your work on that. Engineering and Plan Commission. We're gonna move into that now. We have Bob Thompson, the Director of that department. And this is for DLZ, an LPA consulting contract for the Hundred South Project. Bob, take it away.
This is for the next phase of Hundred South. This is gonna be for the right-of-way services and also what they refer to as the right-of-way lid. GOC is working towards the environmental portion of this here shortly. And after that, they were going to be moving right into the environment, I mean, into the right-of-way services. This is hiring of the appraisers and going about and.
For land act?
Correct.
Yeah.
Contracts not to exceed $405,055?
Correct. That's one of the services, correct. Right-of-way services, if I remember correctly, was $405,000. And then the actual lid is going to be in the area of $400,000.
This is on an 80/20 with the state?
Correct. We're right now going forward and trying to receive more money to get federal funding for this year.
Motion to approve. It's an improvement that's absolutely needed down there.
Yeah. We have a motion and a second for an LPA consulting contract for the Hundred South Project to DLZ. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries.
Doesn't hurt that DLZ brought one of the brightest engineers along with.
Yeah, you noticed I was turning around and looking at Tricia, so.
Thanks, Bob. Then we have Porter County Substance Abuse Council, Dawn Pelk and Chris Boyer. Byer? Is it Byer? I'm sorry. I don't know why I said Boyer. Good morning. How are you, Dawn? Good. This is a comprehensive community plan. I'll turn it over to you folks to give us the, what you're doing.
Terrific, thank you. Again, my name's Chris Byer, and I'm a board member with the Substance Abuse Council. And Dawn is our executive director. And so we're here today to request approval of our 2018 Comprehensive Community Plan update. As you may or may not be aware, the Comprehensive Community Plan is completed by each coalition within the state every three years, and it outlines risks and needs within the community as are related to substance use. So it's unique to each county within the state. Goals and objectives are then formulated to combat those identified needs. Our coalition created our current plan last year and chose to focus on three specific areas, those being prescription and other illicit drugs, with an emphasis on opioids and heroin, also alcohol abuse among youth and adults, and then also marijuana. In between each three-year cycle, the coalition is required to update the previous year's progress in meeting their established goals. And so that's what you have before you today. We actually, in 2017, completed year one of our approved Comprehensive Community Plan. And this year, we were responsible for updating our progress on our goals and objectives. And I can tell you that we've been very busy. It's amazing to see in creating this plan how much we as a coalition, both as a group and then individually, our members in their own lines of work have contributed to the fight of substance abuse. One of the, the updated plan was recently completed and submitted to the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute for their approval, for the review and approval. It was also approved this past Thursday during the coalition's monthly meeting. And so the last stop, so to speak, is with this particular body for approval. So if there are any questions, Dawn and I would be happy to try to answer those for you. If not, we would request, at this time, your approval.
Any questions of the board? Just that, nice plan, by the way. And the commissioners are also, just to provide you with an announcement of sorts, that they're considering joining a group of litigants. Is that the right word, Scott? Why don't you, why don't you go out and explain that real quick, what we're considering?
There's the opioid litigation that is starting to kick off across the country. We've been approached by, the commissioners have been approached by firms representing 25 cities and counties across the state of Indiana. And basically, the commissioners are taking into consideration whether to join in that opioid litigation at this point or not. So it's at the very early stage, but it is something under consideration at this point.
Any other questions? And with this document, that your plan that you're putting together, what's the basis for that? Is that just so everybody's coordinating efforts? And then is this used for any type of grant purposes or other things moving forward? Or I'm just trying to understand sort of how it all works and, you know?
It's best to create, it's kind of like it's our roadmap of what we're gonna follow. And Dawn can speak to this further even. But we do, recipients, or members of the coalition are able to receive grant funding for their programs. And so they would refer back to this plan.
I got you.
To fight, to address these goals and objectives in their request for the grant.
Okay.
That's right.
Yeah. So, good. That's what I thought, but I wanted to double check. Any other questions of the board? With that, I'll open the floor. Entertain any motions.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the Comprehensive Community Plan by the Porter County Substance Abuse Council. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next up, I think we have John Moore. And are you alone, John?
Yes, I am.
I didn't know if the Deacon was, okay. Morning, John Moore.
Morning, commissioners. How you doing?
So what you got for us? I'll let you give, I'll let you give the lay of the land here.
Okay. The reason I'm here is requesting permission to hold a Vidalia onions fundraiser at the courthouse, on the north side of the courthouse in Valparaiso here. It says in the letter that we submit it would benefit the Shriners and the Masonic Lodge in here in Valparaiso. I wanna make sure, and I wanna clarify, the money, all proceeds that are, that come from the sale of these Vidalia onions are primarily directed toward the Shriners, the O'Rourke Shrine in Michigan City, of which many members of our lodge belong. All the money from that goes to overhead costs, plus all the proceeds go to transportation costs, allowing our Shriners to transport children primarily to the hospital up in Oak Park, Chicago. It's not for operating costs of the lodge or anything like that. So.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for us to use the North County lawn on May 5th from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. to sell Vidalia onions, which will benefit the O'Rourke Shriners and the Porter Lodge Freemasons. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Post saying sign. Motion carries. And I'm gonna put in an order for the first bag of Vidalia onions.
I'll put in an order for the second.
Because I like, I will make sure we're really good on that air.
They're like, we're happy to personally deliver those, and yes.
Thank you.
Or squeeze out. Anybody needs them, please contact me.
All right. There's your plug.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, John. We have Porter County Soil and Water Conservation District. Michelle's not here. This is a request for Michelle to have Soil and Water